Time is six o'clock. It's where this is the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Trinidad and Colorado on March 7th, Tuesday. July, will you please say that?
I feel that you may just say goodbye to the United States of America. To the United States of America, we stand on the nation's ground. And this is almost a little bit of a justice.
Right. We have a roll call. Tabano?
Here.
Grago? Your opponent here. Shu?
Here.
Sherman?
Williamson?
Here.
Grigo.
Recording in progress.
Just for the general knowledge of the, of everyone here, the mayor is in Washington, DC at a conference, and then the mayor part time, so I'm acting in his stead. Item two, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes that anyone would like to make to the agenda? We have a request from the mayor that we postpone the executive session until he's back, two executive sessions that are on the agenda, until he's back in town. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we delay the two, uh, delay the two executive sessions, item number 11A and of item 11B until the full council is present.
Have a second?
Second.
Call the vote. Tabano?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Oboltri?
Yes.
Shu?
Williamson.
Yes.
Okay, policy items and staff reports.
What's that you say?
We have on the agenda.
Oh, I apologize. We do have one item. That's right. Michael's presentation is now. So housing now initiative program update from Michael Irvin.
You almost got off.
No, for nothing. Well, I did provide a staff report with an update. I haven't been answering any questions. I know everyone's been asking where certain projects are at. Do you want me to go through each one or give specific questions? Can we go through your form?
I, I'd like if you would give us the highlights because you've seen that the public doesn't know what's going on.
That's, yeah, that'd be great. Um, so far today, we have received 11 projects for a total of 115 potential units. 62 of those, I mean, is to be funded from the incentive funds, which would have the deed restriction for permanent residency or long-term rental. At this time, the $2 million that was set aside, there's 450,000 roughly remaining. When I say roughly, the reason for the rough count is TAPs. We don't know exactly that we are budgeting an amount for TAPs. So unfortunately, we did have the one project drop out, the one unit. But we also have seen interest tonight from Trinidad State Junior College for two units that you'll be considering later. And also, we have had a potential application coming in from 613 Arizona Street, which I believe is eight vacant apartments in the core. So we haven't done, Wally and I have not done the site visit, but it's just a matter of the property that are getting to town when I'm here and while I'm here. So obviously, we have surpassed our 100 unit goal. What I will say is, I, I think with development, there's always like, I'm gonna see it go faster and faster. I, in, in doing these kind of projects across state, it's normally three years. It's normally three years because there's a year of getting entitlements, construction financing, everything, and then a few years of actually building the stuff. So, um, but we have seen some progress. So the new Trinidad apartments, those are the ones above the, I forget the new restaurant name, and they've been there. It's horrible, right?
Allmax?
Yes, Allmax, thank you. They are continuing to proceed. They did run into an issue because it's of floodplain insurance requirements, so they are dealing with that. The Depot Lofts submitted for the DOLA's Transformational Corruptive Housing Grant. I know this, uh, the state has reviewed their application because they're in the first round. Whether or not they got the awards, it's yet to be seen, so the state hasn't made any announcements. Arizona Live Work Lofts has been actively working with the staff. They did have an issue with slopes in the parking in ADA, so they're trying to look at the city on getting the correct, uh, that's really what's been going up in permanent sport building permit. Timber View Apartments is under construction. The East Street School is currently going after a TCO right now, so they should be the first project actually to check from the city. State Street Rental Properties, the owners basically have stated that they've gotten through remediation and they need, trying to get, find a time to get their crews to those two sites with all the other projects they have. Uh, so, but they are very much so interested. Eagles Hall, um, they hit a, quite, uh, hit a snag when they first started with their application with the State of Surt Fund. Originally, the state was saying that they didn't want to see eight units or nine units upstairs, um, but they have since worked that out and they are proceeding now. So that, that is a good resolution because three units, I think, would have made the project economically not feasible for them. So they are proceeding, and we expect them to go through the city's land use application process here soon. 234 North Commercial Lot, uh, this has gotten, uh, this is, uh, the picture store, uh, this has gotten through initial design work. The architect has been hired, and I even believe he's even working with a DC right now to get construction costs. So he is actively, holy Trinity, did get, I did confirm, they did also get their application submitted for the DOLA Transformational Corruptive Housing Grant. Uh, I believe they're asking for $10 million from DOLA, so that's a big, big award if they were able to do that and leverage the town's, the city's funds. The League's apartment unfortunately was the only project that I was not able to get an update for, for the council, for this meeting. I didn't run into Wally today, so I, I know he was actively asking. So I apologize, I don't have an update on that. And then tonight, 9:20, 9:26, still around, is Trinidad State Junior College, and I'll be here to present that here in a short bit. So happy to answer any questions.
City Council has no questions, Mr. Grigo.
I think you can go right now. Pretty, pretty good.
You said a TCO, is that a certificate of occupancy?
As a temporary certificate of occupancy. So normally, um, well, I know that the East Street School is looking at trying to get the first four units that have been fully completed. Normally, you grant a TCO, all my safety issues have been addressed. Um, so I know there's some discussion going on with the fire and the building department to make sure that those issues, so that the building could be safely occupied while the other, while the units upstairs are getting the finishing touches.
Okay. I've never heard that term before. Yeah, the Seventh Street, the Timber View, I go by that every day. Man, they're rocking on that.
You know, that's.
Destruction line, they're going fast.
That is a great example of, that project was dead. Uh, he had walked away from it, uh, and was probably put the land back up for sale, and the city's incentive was worth making him come back and got across the finish line with his financing.
That's great.
So I admit, I, he had a, he's, he's actually getting a chaff along from that project. So that's a really great example of the city coming to the table and chaffing that additional contribution that a city, especially with its TAPs as well, that really made a pencil for him. So he locked in a bit, he traded, he wasn't paying attention.
I have a question. I can still remember back to the first meeting when we started this, and there were so many questions in my mind, and a lot of stuff has transpired along the way, but this is, this is just so encouraging to hear the update of each. And then, like you mentioned, um, and Councilwoman Greg were talking about the speed of that project. It's just, it is really encouraging to see, and just a good example of what can happen when we all work together, so appreciate it.
I applaud the council for, you know, going after this because this is a, the, the issue that I was talking with a, with a different gentleman last night when I came to town, I was just asking what I was doing. There isn't, there normally isn't typically funding for private individuals to do these types of projects, and you guys listened to the gap that was needed, and this is the result, so thank you.
Am I correct in reading your report that there's about 450,000 that's left in what we've allocated that we can put towards a housing incentive?
Correct.
Okay. Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Petitions or communications roll are ready.
Hello, council, staff members. Good evening. I just wanted to say through Jared Chatterley recently in the Office of Outdoor Recreation, I did a hiking and walking guide for the city, and I wasn't sure that everyone had seen it, and to be honest, I'm really proud of it. It took me a bunch of work and a bunch of time, and I spent a lot of effort on it, so I just wanted to give you all a copy, if that was okay with you all. So I'm gonna do that real quick.
Thank you.
That's no problem.
I see through that can you've done the water.
To be honest, me and my wife, we're very welcome. We walked every trail in this guy, every city trail in this guy, not the state parks, just three days ago, clocking it 16 miles, 1,200 feet elevation from our house. It was so much fun. We have so many awesome things here, and I was so proud to get to show them off for the city. So I'm excited for this summer, for the tourists and the people that visit to get to see our wonderful trails. So thank you all so much, and have a great time.
Thank you.
They're at the Welcome Center.
They'll be there for, I mean, that'd be the only area that you have just at Welcome Center.
Also, we've distributed them along the front range a little bit as per the contract, but a lot of them are gonna be on Main Street, and the business is there to make sure that we hit all of the visitors this summer.
Fantastic.
Awesome. And also, there's a couple more ideas that Jared has for a few more of these. So if you like them, let's do a driving guide and maybe a historic building guide, and let's just make sure everybody knows how great this town is. All right, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
The next, uh, people on the agenda are Marcia and Catherine Hook. If they both come up, do they just give five minutes together?
Yes.
Okay.
That'd be funny.
Okay, Marcia and Catherine Hook.
Did you ask for one?
Yeah.
We just came, we wanna urge construction of the depot because we've been coming here since Reorda was mayor. He said the city had the money, so where's the depot? Where is it? I mean, let's, let's pause in construction. The Amish people use that all the time, and they put their babies on the platform. It's sickening, there's not even a bench for them. I see people take their dogs up there, and the dogs pee on the platform. It's unhygienic, and it's really an embarrassment to the town because we have two festivals now organized. I'm with the theater, and we have that spaghetti western comedy festival, and I think a bicycle festival we organize with the train. People get off here, there are no facilities, there's not, there's no restroom, no bench. They've never had a bench. I mean, temporarily, a bench could be put there. There are two benches around the Veterans Memorial by Geneva Park, and I never see a person sitting there. So I wonder whether there's not a bench. Does anyone answer that?
Generally, we don't respond from the guys about questions, but we can refer you to our, our city.
Yeah, the city manager responded. What happened to the money that Mayor Reordan told us was available?
And I'm not sure what money he was talking about, but currently Amtrak is building and has design plans that they're working on for a warming shelter, which will include restrooms and an indoor space for people to be able to, to go. The part of the problem is that the platform is, is owned by Amtrak, so it's really their responsibility to provide that amenity for passengers. Uh, but there are some things that are in the works right now that I think are really gonna help. Like I said, that warming shelter should be coming along. I think construction's supposed to start in a few months. So there will be something there. And then, uh, City Council has been having discussions about Transportation Center in general, and so we're moving forward with those activities.
That's another thing, idea's been floating forever, is essential transportation, whether the trolley, the bicycles, the cog bus, the, the Amtrak train, it was also, but it's never come to. And you're slumming parking here, aren't you gonna find that? Yeah, why was all that parking built there? Nobody, I mean, some people put their RVs there.
Yeah, and I'm not sure that it's around that, I apologize, but.
Well, I've been here, I lived in Trinidad 27 years, and about 20 years ago, they tore down Road Station. There was a, a station of depot, and they built the highway, and they said they were gonna build a new depot. It's been 20 years.
20 years, yeah.
And there's no depot, and people that come down from Pueblo, I talked to an Alguin couple, who's originally from here, I don't know what their name was, but they couldn't breathe that there wasn't some sort of shelter.
For sure.
At least.
If you were.
It's a shame.
Address the, the mayor's council. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes, and, well, to whom should we go to do, to, I, I know, I wonder how much Amtrak had, had planning this, and I don't know what the shared responsibility is between the city and.
If you want to call the city manager's office, I'd be happy to sit down with you. We can have some other chat involved and answer your questions.
Okay.
Along with the visitor center, the Welcome Center.
If you could.
They ought to consider a depot for the train passengers.
Yeah, it'd be nice to coordinate the welcome, like they haven't done, I don't know if you've ever been to that, I just think, but they have a really nice Amtrak station with the Welcome Center inside of a whole sort of building, as you know.
I know, we will ride the train quite often. Can every town, no matter how small they are, have a depot? Trinidad does not, and I think it's a shame and in the air or something.
Thank you for sharing your thoughts.
Most of them do that, thinking about the visitor center or the Welcome Center.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joni Snyder.
To the council members, thank you for hearing us. I'm representing Earth Mountain Education Farm. I'm the director of Earth Mountain Education Farm, which we are an outdoor education center out of Weston. We've been here 21 years, for, for anybody who hasn't heard us. We manage the community garden, we do a lot of the organic farming, and it's all on a community basis. We have three acres in Jansen that we've been farming for the last 10 years. So, um, we, you'll see that Cedar Street Play Gardens, so there is a downtown vacant lot, and I'm just here to announce and, and to fill you in on some of the, the, this new project to our city that Earth Mountain is working with the community on. So it is in the Corazon, so it is in the downtown area. It's on Cedar Street, right next to the Advanced Climate Solutions Building. So it's a fenced lot, it is privately owned, and will be in lease of that lot. The people who do own it have seen green space there for a long time. It could have been sold. So, um, we partnered with, with the landowners, and we talked, and now we're developing the lease on that property to create the Cedar Street Play Gardens. Okay? And there is a lot of play gardens, if you look at play gardens, there's a lot of neat, um, play gardens, farm parks, things like that happening in the cities. This would be an urban agricultural project. We're bringing a farm to the downtown area, um, but an interactive educational experience for tourists that are coming. It's just one more added feature to the gardens of our town, which is about the fifth garden that we have, and, um, and it will be a managed space that will be open and closed at night. It is fenced at this point, so it will be managed, so we're actively farming it, and we manage with farm managers down there. So we are getting public comment right now. Posted two meetings, people are very excited, they are giving their input. We have one more meeting, I invite you to come on Thursday at the Comments at 5:30 for community input. And, um, so it's pretty basic, there's a lot of work to be done there. All the infrastructure and utilities need to be brought in with our, an electric meter, water meter, um, and some of that work. We would love to see that the city would partner with us on this, on this project for the next 10 years, right? And, um, and, and people are really excited because it's an interactive play space that's accessible to everyone, handicap accessible, and what's kind of happening is, you know, the, the special needs group is really excited about kind of being a part of building their special needs garden. The farm managers that I have are educators, so they have been working in Fort Collins and in different areas, and Boulder, um, for different outdoor schools. This is another outdoor experience for people who are coming into our town. Um, a lot of natural playground kind of atmosphere, so almost bringing the forest into the town, uh, where the kids will have their own little garden spaces and things like that. So, um, I would just like to announce this project to you, I welcome you to the community meeting, we'd love to see your support in this. We've had other partnerships before in the way that we are all in the city lot at the community garden, we had revitalization there, and I also employ our teenagers, if you're not aware, with an internship program that pays them to work on these farms. Um, they're doing really viable, amazing work feeding our community. So they work for eight weeks, and they, uh, it's a stipend-based program that's all grant-funded. We are a nonprofit, and we're funding this all through nonprofit grant funding and donations. So any, any aligning funds that you guys might, you know, see that works and that we can work together on, I think this is another added amazing experience for tourism, um, coming in because people are familiar with these type of spaces. Um, and they're also, um, uh, for our community to have that safe environment that is very interactive, educational, you can almost call it botanical, but I don't think it's Trinidad botanical gardens, you know, so I don't think we're, you know, fully satisfied, but everything would be labeled, all edible landscaping, you know, highlighting zero escaping, highlighting sensory gardens, highlighting pollinator gardens, a lot of different areas in this. Just give so many, so many thanks to the landowners who do have held this space for something special for the community. Um, they are community members that many people know, one of, we'll go scared right now. So, um, yeah, and so that they, they really are, are really excited about this, and I think the, the community is getting pretty excited about it too, so thank you for, for listening. Any questions?
We typically don't ask questions, but thank you so much for letting us know.
Thank you.
What time is it, Joni?
About 5:30.
Where's the Commons?
It's on Main Street at 218.
Next, Claudia Henning from the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, I have some handouts for everyone. You'll see that these handouts are declaring that we have a Santa Lucia Day event that's gonna be June 9th and June 10th this summer. Uh, before you know it, it's around the corner. Uh, we are looking for vendors, food and non-food. We're going all the way up to Pueblo to look for new truck, uh, food trucks. So it'll be exciting, I think it's gonna be much different, it's gonna be very robust from last year, and it's gonna be located in downtown Trinidad. We are looking for sponsorship opportunities, and that is part of the package that I gave you. Putting on an event like this is expensive, and so we're looking for some help in supporting the event. And we have all the way from rancher packages down to Broncos, so it'll be very much fun. And part of all of these packages, it is vendor space and spot in our parade, what we plan on having on Saturday morning. So it, there's a preliminary discussion in your brochure about what's going to be happening on those two days, and we have a full of activities for family, kid games, nighttime games, it'll be really fun. So we see a wanted poster, uh, if you would like to pass it on, I would appreciate that because I'd love to get the word out. And finally, you have a coffee talk. I'll, as you may know, we already do coffee talks once a month on the first Wednesday of the month, and this coming coffee talk is gonna be over at the county building. So I was there this morning inviting them, and I'd love to see all of you. Any questions? Give me a call. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, sorry, Annie or Shetty?
Good evening, um, I just wanted to give you all an update. Last December, well, just last year, we ended the membership with 106, and in January, we had nine of our members renew, four new members, so that brought our count up to 114. And then as of last month, we had 10 members renew and two new members, so that brought us up to 123 members now. So we are building our members back up. Um, we also wanted to let you know that we did move our office, we're still in the Champion's Building, but we're in Suite 200. So we just have a bunch of exciting things going on, and we just wanted to give you all an update.
We have such a Chamber of Commerce.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 5A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of February 21st, 2023. By B, approval of bid received by, from Blazer Electric Company in the amount of $118,956.98, $99.00 for LED streetlight poles for First Street Project Number 03-2023. C, approval of bills in the amount of $1,432,525. D, approval of payroll for February 18th, 2023 through March 3rd, 2023 in the amount of $435,028.62. Can I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote. Tabano?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Oboltri? Sorry.
Yes. Item six, public hearings. Can we do this now? I can't remember.
Luke, yes.
Item 6A, public hearing for consideration of ordinance authorizing the master equipment lease purchase agreement dated March 1st, 2023 between the city as lessy and community leasing partners for the acquisition of a new Tarex Derek Digger truck. This, who among the staff is going to present this? Cheryl? Ms. Navra? Do you open hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. The carry's up.
Yeah.
So this is the second reading and public hearing for the lease purchase for the Derek Digger, Digger Derek truck, and the cost of the vehicle is $323,303.50. We will be using $50,000 of down payment from the marijuana fourth quarter allocation, which we hopefully will approve later, and the remainder will come from the power and light fund. This is a five-year term with a 4.92% interest rate, not as good as we received before, and the total amount of interest over the five years is $36,607. Council, any questions?
Just if we're in good financial shape, where we could pay it off early?
We would. We definitely would, we just have to see how the, the electricity rate increase impacts the budget. Um, I know they have a lot of other projects in queue, so just depending on how that works out, but yes, we would absolutely pay it off sooner.
And there's no penalty to pay?
Oh, there is not. Okay.
No questions since our discussion.
And you mentioned that it went, it's now 4.92, did it go up recently, or is that just? No, the previous, the wheel loader, I think we got it 2.18%, so it's literally half of what the interest we're paying now, because they're similarly priced. Does the public have any comment about this proposed lease purchase agreement? There are a line. Here are none. Here is closed. Item 61, second reading of an ordinance authorizing the master lease purchase agreement dated March 1st, 2023 between the city as lessy and community leasing partners for the acquisition. the acquisition of a new Tarek's Derek Digger truck. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? Call the vote. Tibano?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Item seven, unfinished business. We have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Item eight A, consideration of appointment of Keith or Merchant and Barbara McKnight to the Urban Forestry Board. Are Mr. Merchant and Ms. McKnight here tonight?
Yes.
Can you come forward? I wanted to give both of you, we wanted to give both of you a chance to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in being on the Urban Forestry Board.
I am a native, almost native of Trinidad. Of course, when everything was dying, I left town thirty-five years later, came back. My mother was failing and my husband brought me back to help her. I am a master gardener in Wyoming and I will not bore you with all the trees I have planted over my lifetime. I want to help Trinidad. I can remember this place being beautiful with all the trees and now fifty years later, they are dying. And I don't want this to be a town where all you see is dead trees and pieces falling off. And so I want to help. Thank you, Ms. McKnight.
I like her. I'm sorry. Did I say that? Yeah.
Mr. Merchant?
I was born and raised here. I spent my entire life here, other than the three years I left to attend college at CS Pueblo, where I got my bachelor's in wildlife and natural resource management. I'm very passionate about nature and wildlife. My house is full of plants and strange animals that creep and crawl. And I am also a firm believer in if you want to improve the community, you have to be involved in the community. And so that's just something I'm looking to do here is bring a little bit of my passion and education to the table to try to make progress.
Thank you. Councils have any questions?
Thank you for stepping forward. Appreciate you, Lys.
I definitely appreciate your guys' passion. But I do have noticed so many trees, especially it seems to me the evergreens around Trinidad are just starting to be in really poor health and dying. I mean, trees that have been presumably around for thirty, forty years easily are just dying, so.
Well, my pet now lives on pine in that triangle that used to be beautiful. And now, I don't know, but I'm going to find out what to do about it. Okay.
We need to start trying to figure a solution for our downtown trees. Just the four I.
No, they were in trouble.
It's wrong species. They're lived in the.
Oh, the. Like everywhere else in town, all the.
Councilor Schu has a question for the city.
Oh, we have this board here. Do we have funding for them? Is there anything that, do you get funding from us or from grants or how?
Do you mind if I answer?
No.
We had one meeting we have and we got a grant and you have fifteen hundred and we got the grant from somewhere for another fifteen hundred. And right now, Karen Wolf is our fearless leader and she gave us the, aside from for this next month, the minus, where to put six trees? And it's fun. If I only have six trees, what kind and where? And that's where we are, but we have three thousand dollars right now.
Any other questions? Can I have a motion to appoint Keith or Merchant and Barbara McKnight to the Urban Forestry Board?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote. Tibano?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes. Thank you.
Item eight B, Trinidad State College Housing Now Incentive Agreement Consideration.
Mayor for Town and Council, Michael, I just wanted to point out before we start the side, we do have Dr. Upper on the Zoom side as well.
Okay.
So the request is for nine twenty and nine twenty-six Stonewall. I mean, it was a sewer line. I shut my computer down. They are having an issue with a cross-connected sewer. And so the college came to the city to see if there was any assistance to assist with getting these houses completed and that expense. This project technically does not qualify under the vacant qualifier in the vacant housing, but since it's not the commercial district, it's not on the anti-dilapidated ordinance, it technically wouldn't qualify. However, I think, as you know, the trades program is very much involved in trying to build the trades in your community and to create a program in getting students ready to go into that field to produce housing. So we wanted to bring this project to the council's consideration. We did verify that the sales prices being offered well below the hundred percent A and I mark, which is great, especially with interest rates the way they are today. And they have agreed to place an de-restriction on their, on both of the properties in exchange for the funding. So while it technically does not qualify, I think the council has the ability to allow it to qualify and you are getting the de-restrictions in place. So with that, I will want a discussion from the.
Dr. Upper, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Um, yes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good. Well, good evening, council members. Thank you very much for allowing me to join you today remotely. Again, I'm Rhonda Epper, President of Trinidad State College. I am joining you from our Alamosa campus where I am this week. Otherwise, I would be there with you in person. But really pleased to be able to present this proposal to you for the Housing Incentive Fund. We are working to try and address blighted housing and affordable housing in the community. And as you may know, we received the grant monies from the Attorney General's Office in 2021 and we started working on these two houses on Stonewall, nine twenty and nine twenty-six in the spring of 2021. We've been able to work with about fifty students, putting about fifty students through the program thus far, and those are students that are out working for contractors in our community. And really, the goal of the project was threefold. It was to address blighted housing in rural communities, to help build a workforce, to help with the shortage of workers faced by local contractors, and to actually put affordable housing back into the communities through the houses that we work on. So we have these two houses on Stonewall and then we purchased another house on First Street, I think ten twenty-four East First Street. That will be our next project after these two. Nine twenty-six is ready to go on the market. We were, we were ready to put it on the market when we found out that there was this sewer line issue, when we got the letter that's attached in the application package from Bob Just. And so we thought we would do our due diligence and ask the city to partner with us to help address this fairly expensive issue with the sewer line and try and get the house ready to go on the market. We have put about three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars thus far out of the grant into these homes. And they are fantastic homes. They have new, completely new mechanical and electrical systems, new plumbing, new HVAC. They actually have air conditioning, brand-new windows, new kitchens, new bathrooms. So they're going to be an absolutely wonderful home for someone in our community. And having the de-restriction on them will ensure that it is affordable housing. And so that's, that's our request, that, that the city partner with us to get these houses ready to go on the market.
Thank you, Dr. Epper. Does council have a question for either Mr. Yurman or this, or Dr. Epper?
For Michael, I would like, you were explaining that, that they're really not out. So do we have to change anything to give?
No, I, I think the council has the discretion on incentive funds. We, I, you know, they are, they're currently vacant housing and I do agree with the fact that the college is, you know, is tackling blight. They weren't cited under the ADO ordinance, so technically they're not. But again, I think under the incentive funds, the, the council has the juris, the discretion on how to award this funding. And I, and I think at the bottom line, really you have to remember that the incentive, that what you get back in return is a de-restriction in perpetuity, keeping these units as primary residents and as or a long-term rental for the occupants from here on out, so.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I think it's a good idea. I just wondered if we had to change anything that we might have to do that. And was the sewer problem an issue before they built that there? I mean, did something go wrong as, as far as?
I think it's, it's a, it's a cross-connected sewer. Yeah, yeah, so it's two houses that are sharing one sewer connection, so they need to be separated. It's just an antiquated thing that happened in our past, but it's crucial to the development of these properties.
Yeah, I know, we have a couple houses like that before that, of the same sort. No, that was the only question I really had was that if we had to change anything to make it, so we wouldn't have any problem, I just go ahead and this would go on the housing?
Yeah, this would count against, so the, the four fifty that I cited earlier.
Right.
That, and actually I, I'm, you can see that I accounted for that in that table on my update, so this still leaves.
You might have hit it or something.
No, I just wanted to. I'm careful about that. It's a great project.
Mr. Yurman, stay up here.
Okay, okay, sorry.
Criego, do you have any other questions?
So I do have a question, but potentially it's for Les. Les, is there any legal concern of proceeding just under our discretion? Any concern at all?
No, I, I have no concerns about this. I mean, what do you mean in terms of proceeding under your discretion?
Well, I mean, unless I misunderstand, it's not under the exact intent of me.
Right.
So would we proceed with discretion? So is there any?
I have no, I, I think it means some legal criteria. I think it's perfectly appropriate for, for this, this program.
I'd just like to note it.
Sugar. I'm all good.
Mayor for Town and Council, Les has reviewed the agreement that we'll sign with, with the college as well, so he's been involved in the process as well. I, I concur with Les. I don't see any concerns with.
I think, you know, like as the other unit we proceed with, I mean, it's going to be a really good benefit to the community at large and be helpful in increasing our stock and port of homes, so.
And now they are, one another housing purchase on First Street. Would that come into our?
So I, what I will say is that every time we get an application, we actually go and we look and, and look at them and see if they're going to be eligible. The, you know, the big consideration for me recommending this is the purchase price. So I don't know any details about that, but we do want to see on these poor sale units that the purchase price is affordable. And so I think we'd have to talk to the college again, see exactly what their plans are and do the review criteria. So I'm not prepared to speak on the new project.
No, I would just, if they would apply ahead of time, then we could.
Sure.
You wouldn't have to come in.
Yeah, no, I, I would, you know, it's up to the council on, on that, on, on the next project, but we, I would want to do my due diligence and make sure that they understand that, right? Because it's, it's not free money. There's an obligation to put a de-restriction into how to purchase price.
Thank you. And Dr. Epper, I just wanted to thank you and the staff at the college, Jerry Begley, all those students, very commendable. I mean, it's just amazing, the transformation that has transpired in the last year.
Thank you, councilmen. We are, we're really proud of the work that the students have done and we hope to continue it. And that's the idea. We're not going to make a lot of money on these houses selling at, at the price point we're selling them for, but whatever we do make will go back into the program to allow us to buy more houses so we can keep it going.
I don't have any questions or concerns, so can I get a motion to authorize the mayor on behalf of the city to enter into a workforce housing funding agreement appropriating fifty thousand dollars with the Trinidad State College and authorizing the city to execute the workforce housing de-restriction to be reported upon project completion and incentive fund payment by the city? Second?
Second.
Call the vote. Tibano?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogletree? Yes. Mission misses. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Epper. Thank you. Item eighteen, first reading of an ordinance revising the city's water rate schedule and the city's plant investment fees and setting a hearing for consideration of said ordinance at six PM on March twenty-first, 2023. Can I have someone to introduce this?
Oh, yeah.
And who will be presenting this?
Mayor for Town, we have Mark Vehoe, our Director of Water.
Thank you.
Counselor? This is the first public hearing for a proposal to revise the rate structure for the water and sewer. Staff is currently working with Andrew Rine for the Rastaus Financial Consultants Incorporated on revising water and sewer rates for the city of Trinidad. The proposed water rate increase is projected to be ultimately fifty percent of the base rate for residential and commercial customers with an effective date of April first, 2022, 23. The proposed sewer rate increase is projected to be forty percent of the base rate for residential and commercial customers with an effective date of April first, 2023 also. Counsel could elect not to accept the recommendations and not approve the water sewer rate change, which would diminish our current cash reserves and ultimately to a deficit in the water and sewer department budget. The revision of the water and sewer rate structures are necessary. Both departments have seen increased costs in material, chemicals, labor, fuel, and equipment necessary to maintain, upgrade, and replace our infrastructures. The costs have also continued to rise to maintain and acquire additional water rights, which will be needed in order to support future growth in our community. As previously mentioned, our water rates have only increased ten dollars and thirty-two cents over the last forty-seven years. At that rate, it's going to be near impossible to upgrade our infrastructure with, which is actually eighty to a hundred years old. It's as old as the buildings and homes in this town, so. I'd like to introduce Mr. Andrew Rine, who worked on our water rate study, for questions and answers, and put it over there.
Thanks, Mark. We've, we've got a, a real brief presentation that was in the packet and certainly you can walk through that and then here to answer any questions.
Why don't you go ahead and address the water part of it? Because I know there's also a certain sewer increase that you also did an analysis of, but if you could focus on the water in the beginning, that would be helpful.
Sure. Can I, can we put it in slideshow view or?
Donna?
Or, I'm sorry.
No, 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 she's, she's controlling her. Donna? Yes, is it not up there?
It, it's up, but could you go slideshow on the middle, on the top rhythm? And then just, just start the slideshow.
Oh, sure, slideshow. Well, let me find it.
Look at her, look. If you go up, if you find the help and go four over to the left.
I'm helping you. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. I don't usually do this.
I'm sorry, yeah, not, not. She's getting help. Help is on the way. Add. So while, that, that's coming up. I just, the, there's a couple components of water and sewer, start with water. And as indicated, we've been working with the city, completing a comprehensive financial planning, rate and plant investment fee evaluation for the two utilities. And, you know, this is sort of an outcome of that process in terms of user charge recommendations moving forward. And just kind of make a picture. Ah, there it is, okay. So that, that covers, you know, essentially this brief presentation. And next slide, please. As Mark indicated, we've got a handful of drivers, certainly, you know, costing. Certainly, you know, cost increases on, you know, whether it's current operating costs, current facilities. And we're also looking forward in terms of anticipated facilities, whether it's replacing existing infrastructure and/or expanding and being able to provide the service to customers throughout the city and throughout the community over time. So it's not just exactly looking backwards and kind of cost increases. It's also some major facilities that have been identified over the five to 10-year period. And within that, particularly on the water side, through the marijuana access tax revenue in the last, you know, few years, handful of years, the general fund's been helping support the utility and how that support is declining. So that's another one of the drivers on top of the others that I had mentioned. So that's, you know, in terms of big picture on the financial side. I'm going to start with, next slide, please. One component of this, and certainly, you know, happy to answer questions, I'm going to fly at a pretty high level. This is the one-time fees that are assessed to new development. And next slide, please. What we're proposing is adjusting these and increasing them as laid out in the schedule. So just, you know, highlighting for those that are, is familiar with these fees. These are, this is for newer increased development that comes in. So this is more of the one-time and not something that all customers pay. And it's been certainly sometimes since these have been adjusted. Next slide, please.
I have a quick question on that.
Yep.
And I know it doesn't pertain to the sewer, but when, on this, I'm sorry, the water, but on sewer, is the sewer fee directly rated right to the meter size? Is that how that's, is how that works, right?
That's how it's proposed under the updated fee structure. Today, it's assessed based on sewer diameter and pipeline. It's a little bit different, but this puts both based on the water meter size, which is more commonly how these two are assessed.
Okay. Sorry for a little.
No, thank you.
It's a good question. It's a change. Next slide, please. And, you know, these types of comparisons are difficult, but this really focuses in on a new residential connection across, you know, representative communities and similar types of one-time fees with water and sewer assessed, whether with, in the city of Pueblo, through the other communities. As we can see, you know, certainly the proposed fee would be increased for the city and the city within kind of, you know, these communities is somewhat in the middle of this group. If it would be a step and certainly, you know, increase these types of fees and it's the same group. You know, the city's fees are a little bit higher than they are today, but certainly not the highest within the group itself. So now I'm going to move on to the more, more of the rates and fees and those that all customers in the system pay monthly. And certainly, I'm sorry, next slide, please. The focus is, you know, on, start with water and then certainly cover sewer as well. So I just want to highlight a few things. The way that water and sewer is assessed within the city is very similar how it's assessed throughout the state and many communities where there's a fixed component and then a volumetric component. And so to walk through the proposed as well as how it compares to the current, we'll kind of see those elements for both water and sewer. Another item that I want to highlight is that we're proposing to change the billing units. So particularly on the volume side, the rates may not look familiar because they're in a different billing unit. And today, the rates are assessed per 100 cubic feet. And we're proposing that we switch to per thousand gallons. And it's just one, you know, somebody who works in this industry, it's about 750 gallons per 100 cubic feet. Like, I know that conversion just because I have to do it. But it's, even then, you kind of have to think through it. And the meters themselves are in gallons and that's how they're read. So that's just independent of the change in terms of increase. I just wanted to state that in terms of the volumetric side because the numbers may look a little bit different than today what the current rates show. So with that as backdrop, I want to start with water where this is a pretty straightforward. Today, you know, we have fees assessed by meter size and we're proposing to increase those fees. And with that, there's a minimum allowance. It's as part of that fixed charge. We're proposing to modify that for residential customers. And next slide, please. And this is where the, there's a little bit more of the differences on the volume side. Where today, with that minimum, the first 7,500 gallons are included in the base rate. And then there's a volumetric grade that gets assessed for use that's above that for the majority of customers. Under the proposed, we're modifying a couple of different ways. And certainly modifying how that minimum functions and reducing that under the proposed rates. And then implementing for residential customers tiered rates, if you will. That, you know, as you use more, the rate per thousand gallon increases. And then for other customers, we're proposing just a uniform rate. In terms of the more you use, that increases the rate that you charge, but it doesn't quite step up the same way that we're proposing to residential customers. And I'm happy to answer questions, you know, regarding that. I just wanted to highlight and point that out. In terms of the impact, and this is just sort of the water portion for a residential customer. With this structure change and, you know, the couple changes on the, you know, both on the fix as well as the volume side, it's gonna, the impact is going to vary depending on how much you use. So on the next slide, we've compared.
Excuse me before you go to the next.
Sure.
On the bottom right of that screen, where it says non-residential water station golf, which is, is that for our golf course?
Correct.
Okay. But we, we don't charge for that water, correct?
Currently, we're not charging. The suggestion from the consultant is that we begin charging for that water.
Okay.
That's still something, even putting the rate in, still something the council can discuss going further, going in the future.
Okay. That makes sense.
I think you were just coming to explain how this affects the typical residential user, how this would affect them.
Yeah, and so on the next slide, there's a couple of components, but I'll highlight the typical customer. This shows what the bill would be today on the bottom line and under the blue bar, under the proposed. Now, typical customer is right around 7,500 gallons per month. So this just gives, you know, a range depending on bills throughout the year or different types of users, just residential. And the focus is on residential customers. So under the proposed, at that 7,500 gallon level, that would translate to $33 per month for residential customers on the water side.
And before, they hadn't been paying anything extra up to 7,500 gallons, current?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, yeah. So I'm going to switch to sewer and discover this similar information for sewer.
Okay.
Next, so there's a couple of components with sewer, certainly the fixed charge is highlighted here. And I just want to, you know, again, draw the residential customers or the majority of the system and then certainly non-residential customers have these increased value funds. The second component is picked up in terms of the change on the next slide. Where how we bill and on the volume side, we're proposing a couple of changes here. Under the current rates, there's a, you know, an amount per thousand gallons charged, but it's capped for residential customers. So you, you know, basically get to that 7,500 gallons and the bill is capped. And one of the reasons why is it's monthly water use year-round. So if somebody's in the summertime and they're using more water for, you know, what is going outdoor, that's, in effect, why the cap is there. And under the proposed, proposing to modify to more of calculating that volume during the winter period use or when, you know, largely, the majority of water is being demanded is going to the sources. So this is where, if we just look at the rates themselves as what is proposed versus what is current, it's a little misleading because the, how it's assessed and billed throughout the year is also being proposed to be changed. And so in effect, for most customers, residential and commercial, but most customers, when that bill gets recalculated after that winter period, it's going to largely be a fixed bill, a fixed charge for sewer throughout the year. And then the next year will be reset based on that customer's winter use or what we anticipate the discharge into the sewer system is. So it's where I just wanted to stop for a moment in terms of some of the components outside of just sort of the rates themselves because through the volume rate, it jumps off the page a bit there for sewer. In terms of adjustments or changes, the next slide, this shows, you know, again, is a customer's volume component and how the sort of minimum to maximum functions today. And then under what is proposed, how that could change. But most customers, our typical customer, is about 3,000 gallons with that winter period usage. Now, you know, certainly a year-round usage is used, that the volume component is a bit higher. And for a typical customer, under the proposed, it would be a bit of an increase for sewer, a little more than $50 under today with kind of cap and how the average works. It's up 35. So it is a step up for sewer for a typical customer. And then on the next slide, the same comparison group that we looked at for the one-time land investment fees. This compares the monthly water and sewer bills. And just, you know, between the two, the highest bill within the group, again, for a typical residential customer, is about $100, a little more than $100. And the lowest in the group is about 45. And you can see that the city is pretty close to the lower of the group, under the current and under the proposed. It kind of moves up a little bit more into the middle. Now, while, you know, these types of comparisons and questions, you know, in terms of how the city, you know, is it in line? How it may compare with others, it's always a little bit imperfect as well. So just wanted to get at that, that, you know, for a typical user, you know, we've calculated bills, but if someone uses more water or less water within this group, things could shift as well.
See what council questions are.
All right, then, right now.
The only question that was, when you were first showing those charts there going across the slide, you had some prices there telling you about six or seven back and then the prices were different that was on this chart here. I think they were. Can you go? Go back to the panel, almost the chart. Okay, right in there. Went too far. Right, right there. Okay. So those are the rates that are, right, it says proposed monthly charge, right? 24.75 for three quarters line, right there up here.
Yes.
Okay, now, when you, is that the proposed change, is that adding $8.25 to that cost? Or is that the monthly charge?
This is the fixed charge and it's proposed to add 8.25 to the fixed charge.
So, yeah, the fixed charge would be just minimum, right?
Yes.
And then, then how would you add the 8.25 to it?
Well.
That would go by the usage?
No, it, just to clarify, today, the fixed charge is $16.50 for water. Under the proposed, we're proposing the fixed charge to increase to 24.75. For that size meter up through the one-inch. And that translates to an increase of $8.25.
Okay, so it's 16 plus the, yeah, right.
Yeah. So I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just looking at when it says proposed change, I thought you were going to add the 8.25 and.
I'm sorry. No, no, that was, it's trying to.
It's just a fixed charge, right?
I apologize for.
Yeah, it's the difference between the.
Right, okay.
I didn't explain that.
That's fine. No, I kind of thought that's what it was, but I just wanted to clarify because it's kind of deceiving when you first look at it that way, because it says proposed charge. So I would thought you were adding that on to the 24, which would have made it 33.
Got it. Yeah, sorry about that. Sorry.
No, no problem. Thanks for clarifying that.
No questions?
Do you have any information that would show the utilities' reserves if we continue operating without the increase versus the help of the reserves if we accept the changes?
I don't have that number like right now. It's something that we can look into and follow up. But without the adjustment, the, we're unable to fund expenses over the near term. So it's going to, you know, we'd go into a deficit position.
Drop precipitously.
I mean, yeah, and so then it would, you know, come back to the, some level of expenses that are identified like this year, but in the near term. And certainly, we can follow up with a more specific answer, but that, I mean, that's, that's the direction the fund is headed with the expenses that have been identified incorporated. So at some point, it would defer expenses, delay, you know, kind of push, push things out or change, you know, largely the capital. Okay.
I think if I'm understanding what you're saying, the plant investment fees only come into play if somebody's building new construction and adding the water line, just with regard to water first. So if someone's not doing it, that's not something they're going to have to deal with, if someone's not doing new construction. What a residential person then would be looking at, who's a typical user, is going from a current monthly charge of 16.50 to 24.75. If they maintain their water use at 3,000 gallons or less, then they won't be paying any additional on top of that 24.75. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
What percentage of customers use under that threshold, do you know, residential customers?
I don't have the number at my fingertips, but that's something that we've.
See that rough, rough line there?
We can probably get that for you. So it really is, well, if this passes, it may behoove us to be more careful about water usage just generally as people try to that.
Yes, that's one of the objectives.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Do I have a motion to from the first reading of this ordinance? Okay. Call about? Tibano?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Ogletree? Yes.
When will these go into effect? Oh, I'm sorry.
Eighteen, first reading of an ordinance adjusting the city's rate for sewer service and setting a hearing for consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 PM on March 21st, 2023. Who would like to introduce that?
I'll introduce.
Mr. Rine, Mr. Veho.
Oh.
You can come back and kind of give us a synopsis on sewer, so we can. It's a lot of information. So.
We can cue the slideshow.
Just, just cover again, I like, for myself and I think other people like to know as a residential user, how this is going to impact them if the consultant passes.
So with sewer, there's a similar component or components of a fixed and a volumetric element of the bill. And the impact to typical customer is going to be, it's going to vary throughout the year. And I guess, you know, if you think of, you know, a user that uses more in the summer and less in the wintertime. So today, their sewer bill goes like this. You know, depending on, you know, depending where their residential usage is, you're, we're billing more in the summer. Under the proposed change, it's going to be a higher bill for the typical customer, but it's going to be more even throughout the year because of it being based on just. but it's going to be more even throughout the year because of it being based on just sort of that winter period water use instead of monthly water use that is a basis for sewer volume billings. And this is another one where the majority of the customers, when we look at sort of that indoor water use at residential, it's in that 0 to 5,000 gallons a month, with, again, the average of the typical, right around that 3,000 gallon for indoor water use. So for, you know, a customer using 3,000 gallons, it would translate, as proposed, about $20 a month increase for the sewer component.
Great. So one of your slides had residential monthly water and sewer bill survey, and it says that currently, someone paying 35 would then be paying 57. Is that the $20 increase?
It is.
Okay. Any question, any other questions, comments? All right. Thank you.
I have a motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance suggesting the city rate for sewer service inside the hearing for consideration for said ordinance on 6:00 PM on March 21st, 2023. Can I get a motion?
Hold.
Second? Second.
What were you waiting for?
Call the vote. Tabana?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
When will these be effective, the new rates?
Mayor's amendment, council, first of April, basically, so 10 days after the March 21st hearing date.
I am a E, First Amendment to Animal Shelter Service Contract and Lease Agreement with Noah's Ark.
He's present. Yeah, absolutely. I can certainly present this one. So, Mayor and Council, Noah's Ark had come to you with a request for additional funding to support their efforts. And so we're bringing that request forth tonight to see if you all want to vote to formalize that. So we're contemplating $25,000 in the fourth quarter marijuana request, which is further down on the agenda, and then three more increments of $25,000 in our quarterly requests this year for a total of $100,000. In order to do that, we need to amend their contract with the city. So we're bringing the contract amendment first before we get to the fourth quarter marijuana report. So that's where we're at, and happy to answer any questions you may have on that.
So councilmen, tomorrow?
No questions. No questions.
I would like, just as a point of public record, to note that it is, we are obligated to have these services in some form or another. So if you were less, what brings speaking just a little bit to that, I think that's an important thing, you know?
Sure. And I would be happy to do that, Councilwoman Williams. And, you know, pursuant to an inquiry you had earlier of me, providing these kinds of services are one of the fundamental services that municipalities do serve and provide the community. And it's under the police powers of the Colorado statutory scheme for incorporating municipalities, and again, one of the essential services that we are supposed to provide. So you're absolutely correct. It is necessary and certainly appropriate for the city to do this and to have Noah's Ark as the provider of this service.
Okay, thank you.
About, thank you.
Any other questions? I don't have any questions. Can I get a motion to approve the First Amendment to Animal Shelter Service?
So.
The lease agreement, sorry. Second?
Second. If I could, please, don't interrupt, but meta-mayor approach, I was just going to say that Councilwoman Griege is accusing herself of this vote for a discussion. But for the record, I know you're about to take the vote, and I just wanted that to be clear.
Okay, thank you. Call the vote. Tabana?
Yes.
Griege?
I'm staying.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
Item 8F, Resolution Authorizing Expenditure of Marijuana Revenue Received by the City of Trinidad, Fourth Quarter 2022. Ms. Snapper? Who's presenting that?
Uh, Ms. Snapper.
Okay. Hide back there.
As discussed at the councilwork session last week, fourth quarter marijuana's sales tax yielded $509,768. Of that, $359,768 is available for allocation. You have in your packets the resolution that allocates $233,849 to city projects, which is a 65% share, and then $107,930 to the marijuana reserves, $1,391 to the incentives, the 4% share, and then finally, the outside agencies funding, that goes to Trinidad Community Foundation, $3,598.
We talked through all of these at the work sessions, and I wondered if anybody had any follow-up questions or concerns?
Not since we were here.
I don't have any either. Can I have a motion to-
It's too easy, Cheryl, say it.
Can I have a motion to approve the Resolution Authorizing Expenditure of Marijuana Revenue Received by the City of Trinidad, Fourth Quarter 2022?
So.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote. Tabana?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
Item 8G, First Reading of an Ordinance Vacating a Certain Alley between lots 1 to 8 inclusive to the west and lots 19 to 26 inclusive to the east and block 6, and all the alley and block 1, all in Fairview addition to the City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado, and setting hearing for a consideration of said ordinance at 6:00 PM on March 21st, 2023. Can I have someone introduce?
I'll introduce.
Thank you. And Ms. Garrett, are you going to present that?
The alleyways that are, or the alleyway that's being referenced in this ordinance is essentially in the same area where the Frontier Hotel is, Motel is. Back in 1958, the then-city council vacated that alleyway, and it has since been built upon. And so it's, the ordinance wasn't recorded, so it's not being properly reflected in the records. And so the owner of the property and entire company are asking that the city now vacate the alley and correct the property issue.
So, questions?
I'm just amazed there's a Milwaukee street. I mean, I hope there was a Milwaukee street.
There's not anymore? The beer brewers can be used. Any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading of this ordinance?
So.
Second?
Second.
Call the vote. Tabana?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
Item 9, Council Reports.
Los Angeles County Mayor's Council, Bill Phillips, wanted me to tell everybody that the Fort Wooten has, they've removed all of the office spaces there where the former social security office is occupied for the last, I don't know, many decades. It's an open space, just like it was in 1937, and it can house over 700 people and else something. It's good. And that's about it?
I have nothing this week.
Well, I'm going to stand on this soapbox for just a minute.
Uh-oh.
So please, please be patient with me. I just wanted to thank council and staff for believing in Noah's Ark and our board and the staff that works out there. There's three ladies that are in the audience that I work with very diligently to keep that shelter operating. We do it at no, at a great expense of our personal time and a lot of financial support as well. And it was said several meetings ago that I had a conflict of interest, and when I looked up the definition, it means that I'm gaining some personal financial, gaining from being on the board of Noah's Ark, which is totally false. There's no such thing. But I encourage people to please come out and look for yourself. The shelter is very well-run, it's very clean. We have a staff that dedicates itself to maintaining that facility for everybody, for our four-legged citizens as well as our two-legged citizens. And don't believe what you read, come and look for yourself, please, please. We're working very hard. And you ladies sitting in the audience, thank you so much. It means world to me to have that shelter continue. I want to thank you for the dedication that all of you have put into this. Thank you very much.
I have no opinion.
I have to agree with you. I was privileged to take a tour with the staff, and I've always considered Noah's Ark a jewel and a crown. And compared to other communities, we really work hard to take care of our animals, and it's something we should be proud of. I, tomorrow, I'm going to a Colorado Oil and Gas Conservation Commission meeting. It's just a local government meet and greet. They're in town to sort of do a field trip and see all of the gas and oil producers down here. And then on Friday, I'm going to be at Advisory Council for Colorado Creative Industries in Denver. But other than that, that's all I have left on. Reports by city manager and city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor, for attending, council. Just one item today. I just wanted to give council an update. You may have heard, but maybe not, last night, we had a couple of residents who were camping and under Los Angeles Street Bridge, or Angeles Street Bridge, sorry, and they started a fire. It burned through our water pipe that goes under the bridge. So our crews were quick to address it, were out there all morning, most of the day, fixing that section of pipe. And I believe Mark, it's back running at this point. It did shut off, unfortunately, water to Taco Bell, so they were without water today and couldn't do business. So we're, we're looking into ways we can prevent that going forward, but I just wanted to let the council know that that did happen last night.
Thank you.
No, Mayor, for attending, thank you. I just want to let you know that we are going to be having a training for members of boards and commissions on March 24th at 10 o'clock. Is that right? Is that the right time?
That's correct.
Okay, good, thank you. And otherwise, I have nothing else, but well done, man. Well done. Great meeting.
Thank you for being patient.
It was great. Very well done.
Why do I feel this? So, we reached adjournment. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So. Second?
And call vote. Tabana?
Yes.
Griege?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Olutree?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Joining, joining. I got a time to real quick.